Morning. We're going to call to order the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners for Thursday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is nine A M. Our agenda today, action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place your cell phones in deepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. Board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration. Items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public, any such restrictions must be reasonable, may restrict the time, place, manner of the comment, but may not restrict comments based upon a viewpoint. The Board of County Commissioners convenes as other boards, members of the Board of County Commissioners also serves as the Liquor Board, Central Line Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting, may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or separately posted agenda. Uh, this meeting may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. I have roll call. Uh, we have Commissioner Keller, Hockaday, Hendricks, and Henderson in chambers, and um, I don't see Commissioner Jacobson. I believe he said he was going to be absent while he was at his daughter's uh, sports meet. So four in chambers and one absent. Okay, today's invocation will be given by Nathan Sam Whistler of the United Methodist Church. Please rise.
Mister Chair, I don't see um, Mister uh, Sam Whistler here, so um.
Uh, Commissioner Harrison, do the pledge, please.
Thank you. Please join me. I pleasantly just to apply that the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, Pledge of Allegiance. Is that item four, public participation? No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. It has anticipated the public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record. Will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item, each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. Okay, for possible action, review and adoption of the agenda. Do we have any commissioners that want to make a change to the agenda? Any public input? Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, my interest in, I'm uh, I just would like to give you a little update on the traditions. In that, uh, I think which is most important for us and will continue, I read the article in the field last week about the the quarter work on highway fifty, the bank on lights. We will be submitting our drawings of where the full access signal at uh, divisions and highway fifty uh, at the end of next week. You would assume that everything does its plan and that the light will be in place and it ends up so soon as we get it in about one year. Takes about a year, but it could have been cruel and then installation. Along with that, I thought I'd give you a little update on our traditions, uh, starting in uh, the first week of November last year, the airport started to the first house and there are ninety-nine in the construction plant, possibly twenty-eight grand sold in the neighborhood. Uh, they're receiving.
It doesn't say press a button. So the uh, the activity is strong. Uh, we will be paving our next uh, group of sixty-five lots starting uh, tomorrow uh, to be turned over. Uh, we'll be doing inspections the next two weeks, and we've also started another sixty-three uh, lots above our phase two, which again will be paving starting tomorrow. So we'll have a, uh, if everything goes well with, in the next year, we'll have a total of three hundred and twelve finished lots available. And it looks like that we will be building on uh, over ha- uh, over half of those. So just wanted to give you a little update on how things are progressing, and you're all welcome. Uh, we've staked out what we hope will be the uh, the future site for the, the new government center. And after we get it all bladed and it looks nice, we'd like to, if you'd like to come out individually, we'd like to show it to you. You know, it's a, it's a prime spot and it's gonna be pretty nice. So just wanted to give you an update.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so I kind of zipped there in public participation, didn't give you a chance to get up there. Um, we will skip back to item two, invocation, I believe. Uh, we now have Nathan Sam Whistler of the United Methodist Church. So if we go all span, we'll take care of the indications.
Thank you, and I apologize if I'm late. Um, I had to go run the block and I forgot my phone. So, yes, good morning, commissioners and folks of Land County. Let us pray. Gracious God, in your great wonder, we look to you for guidance. We come before you this morning in person and through digital connection, asking for your blessing and guidance of this assembly, concerned citizens, volunteers, leaders, and decision makers. We thank you for this day that you have made and the clean air that we breathe and for the much-needed moisture that we have received. We give thanks and pray for those who serve in every capacity, the community, their country, their state, our political leaders, our military, our emergency responders, our law enforcement, our healthcare workers, and educators, and those who do the thankless jobs that we might not see. Grant this assembly of men and women the wisdom to govern at best, the interests of the citizens and communities that they serve here are humble intercession, and help us to keep in the forefront of our minds your people, your creation, and your love, that your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Remove any hatred, prejudice, or contempt for those who are different, not of our own race, gender, color, class, or creed. Departing from everything that estranges them and divides, help us to love one another. Teach us to see people by delight and love of the faith we profess, believe, and understand, that we may look within ourselves all on generous judgments, all presumptuous claims, that recognizing the needs and rightful claims of others, we remove old hatreds and rivalries and begin new understandings. We thank you for the representatives and authentic leaders, men and women, who love your people and can walk with them, who feel their pain and share their joys, who dream their dreams and strive to accompany them to meet their goal. Help us to see and recognize them. During this time, we would also like to ask that you would continue to keep us and our community safe as we come upon a busy weekend as families and visitors set to come from each direction to celebrate with one another inactivity and entertainment during our county fair. May our joys be great for your son, Jesus Christ, our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay. We're back to item five, review and adoption of agenda. I did call for commissioner comments.
Mister Chair, I would, uh, I do need to pull item eight C.
Do what?
Um, we, I need to pull item eight C.
Oh, okay, you're making a comment on.
Yeah, sorry.
Agenda. So eight C, we're going to pull any other agenda changes. If not, then uh, we have the agenda as presented with the exception of eight C. Do I have a motion on that?
Mister Chair, I'm ready to be adopt the agenda with the exception of item eight C.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So we have a four zero. So that motion passes. Um, we still have five minutes for our time certain for the uh, Bureau of Land Management. We will be waiting here. I don't uh, see Dr. Titus. Still. Oh, yeah, yeah. That's nine thirty, right? So that time certain. So we're going to go to item ten, presentation of awards and our recognition of accomplishments. Do we have any of those? Don't see anybody jumping up. Don't see anybody on that. Looks like ten is accomplished. Eleven commissioners and county manager reports. Let's start with Commissioner Keller.
Well, the ones that I could think of that I attended last committees that I attended last two weeks is the Silver Springs Advisory Board, the Fallon Range Intergovernmental Executive Committee, the Northern Nevada Development Authority General Board Meeting, and the Carson Water Subconservacies District Board of Directors Meeting. That's it.
Commissioner Henderson.
I think, thank you, Mister Chair. Um, one meeting that I do want to report on was the Slough Pack meeting on August fourth. The um, biggest thing that came out of that was we uh, approved a letter to be submitted to the Bureau of Land Management regarding the proposed renewable energy rule. The basis of the rule is it would reduce the fees that uh, renewable energy companies pay to put facilities on public lands. They don't seem to have a problem now uh, getting the money. So I don't, we don't really see the uh, the reasoning behind that. So we had, we had approved a letter, a comment letter for that. Unfortunately, the comment period is closed on that, or I would be asking for an agenda item for this board to approve a letter, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Hendricks.
Um, I attended the Silver Springs Advisory Board and yesterday and last night, I uh, attended the Carson Water Subconservancy District Board. We took a tour of Six Mile Canyon to see all the repairs that they've had to do in there after this last year, and um, they do, they've hired an engineering company and they gave a presentation on what they're planning to do to mitigate that in the future. So it was a good meeting.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I attended the Walker River Irrigation District Meeting. Of course, we talked about the flooding and irrigation requests and and uh, Topaz Reservoir, Bridgeport Reservoir, everything that has to do with water. Imagine that with irrigation district. Um, had a park meeting Tuesday night for the Dressler Park and went over a lot of the activities that have been going on there and projects that have been accomplished. Uh, yesterday, attended the um, sheriff's briefing on the uh, jail suicide, Troy Driver. They covered pretty much the entire case. Um, and the situation occurred there with the district attorney and of course, uh, Taylor Allison was there to read a letter on behalf of the family. There's an excellent um, briefing about a horrible topic, but uh, they did a super job in presenting the evidence that would have been presented in court. So I thought that it was extremely well done um, for your, for your office there. I also had Senator Masto come over. Uh, her and her entourage showed up and we had an excellent presentation by our county manager, Mister Haskin, and took her on a little tour to see some of the projects that she forwarded for us to the Senate Finance Committee. And hopefully we can get those um, six point six million dollars worth of um, projects funded for us, and so she had a very good meeting with us. We discussed other situations going on in the county. And of course, I, I liked her direction that we should ask for more money. Um, that was, that was fine because uh, we need to get a lot of money to get some of these projects online. Uh, other than that, um, that's about all I have for reports, and we'll have the county manager.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. So obviously, the Fair and Rodeo, uh, Lyon County Fair and Rodeo kicks off today, so dressed for the, for the kickoff of that. So I encourage everybody to attend. It's a really fun uh, family-friendly event. So I plan to be there. Um. Commissioner Hockaday mentioned that uh, we had a really great meeting with Senator Cortez Masto. Um, she came down to talk about um, the spring flooding that we had and um, possible mitigation projects for the future. And so we um, we had a very good discussion on that. It was very productive. And uh, look forward to working with her in her office in the future um, on trying to find funding for some of those projects. Um. Commissioner Keller mentioned the N N D A General Board, had a good meeting there. Um, that was a lot of economic activity, economic development activity right now. Um, we're getting a lot of inquiries too within the various departments, so um, stay tuned. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'll keep my report brief today.
Any questions? No? All right. Item twelve, elected official report.
It's next time fifteen, we can go to.
Yep, it's nine sixteen. So minute passed, keep me on record here. We're doing the right thing. Uh, let's go to uh, time certain nine fifteen, six A for report and update only from B L M on current activities. And when you give each of these items, if you would mind stopping, and we'll see if the board has any questions on each of them as we go. Thank you.
Uh, Paul Fueslay, uh, current Sierra Front Field Office Manager, Person City D O M. Uh, the number one would be the Gearington Mine Site Disposal. Not really too much new to report there from uh, the last time I was here. Uh, the environmental assessment has put, has been put on hold pending uh, the outcome of the appraisal.
Okay, if you have any questions, we'll just, yeah, we'll jump in and ask.
Cool. Uh, I got a couple items that I submitted to you, but there's really no new updates on them. Bureau Fiber Optic. Eldorado Dam, I do have a slight update on that one, and uh, we are just about finished reviewing the uh, graph. Uh, and we expect to finalize that here in the next month. And then after that, it will uh, go out to contracting uh, to resolve those health and safety issues that are identified.
Any questions? Okay, just jump in if you have a question. Just jump in, please, so we can move along.
Yeah, I'm not gonna read all, read all these. The next one is the uh, what was the geothermal project? Uh, we received a draft uh, environmental assessment for that. That's kind of in front of our specialists. Uh, comments and editing, then we'll, we'll pass that back to the proponents. And uh, we're looking to finalize that uh, this, this score here, or this calendar.
I do have a question on that. I have a question about, you know, all these solar facilities that are coming in and all that. Um, I want to know what our involvement is going to be. Are we going to have any, any part in the permitting process or any say whatsoever?
Yeah, so uh, it's very early stages of the permitting process with the solar projects. Uh, currently, many of them and I have a whole long list of them because there's quite a few of them. Uh, if you want, I could go project by project. Uh, or I could just speak in generalities of what they're publicly involved in.
Okay. Well, general.
Okay, uh, you know, right now they're in the variance stage. Uh, so we're going through the process of approving them uh, their variance applications, uh, and they need a variance application. These areas were not identified in the nationwide solar environmental impact statement that was done back in the uh, twenty teens. So once these projects come out of the variance project, uh, out of the variance process, uh, then we will start processing their applications uh, and environmental assessments that go along with them. And all these projects will be in environmental impact statements. That'll be the level of NEPA that we use to uh, prove these, to analyze and potentially approve these projects. Uh, and in that process, there will be full community involvement, looking cooperating agencies. Uh, and so, you know, as a county, you'll have full involvement in this process and the ability to provide input and comment and work with us in improving these projects and analyzing this project.
Mister Chair. Thank you, Paul. Uh, oh, go ahead.
Is Lyon County considered a cooperating agency?
Oh, yeah, it could definitely be a cooperating agency.
Commissioner Keller?
So where I was looking at is because as we get the projects moving into Lyon County, to me, most of them are just importing problems to us that uh, where worse our benefit for it. So I'd like to see what the benefits are for our county and what so like uh, like on the solar fields, if there's an inspection, usually you go out to third-party inspections. Uh, can the county be that third party? Can we be more involved since it's going to be in our county? Can we have more add that that say?
Yeah, I think, you know, that those were, will be good topics to discuss with the project components of in that development. You know, there's nothing in our policy that would exclude you from contracting with the solar energy provider to do the inspections or the panel cleaning or any number of the tests.
So at that time, then we can also talk about the like if uh, if they're putting in an industrial thing out in the middle of nowhere, we're gonna have we're, we'll have to handle the emergency management of the area. And so at that time is when we'll be discussing what what our needs are going to be to provide for them, right?
For sure. Yeah, in the development of the environmental impact statement, there'll be whole chapters on emergency services, health and safety, and that's where, you know, your input will be critical, making sure that their developments also meet your needs and provide health and safety.
Fantastic.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Harrison, the German, okay, go ahead.
Also cover a couple special recreation permits that are going on. Uh, this weekend is the Vegas Arena Race. And uh, been going on for the past twenty-plus years. Um, so that, that'll be coming through uh, Friday, Friday afternoon, Friday evening. Uh, probably a couple stragglers into Saturday morning. Uh, and then coming up in October is the Legacy Racing Association Gold Rush, which follows a similar racehorse of the Vegas Arena.
I got a quick question on that. So I'm kind of new to this. This uh, thing, uh, who handles all the, you know, the cost of emergency and everything? Is that the race?
Yeah, so the race provider has an emergency response plan, and they handle the cost of that.
Tied in with the local jurisdiction, right?
Tied in with the local jurisdiction, but only as backup. I mean, the O M law enforcement is out there as well. And, you know, they tend to respond pretty quickly.
So, so our county is on the backup.
Your county is part of the emergency response plan as of like they're listed. But, you know, they aren't the primary medical service providers. Uh, Best in the Desert Racing Association has medical providers on course, are the primary.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, Mister Chair. That brought up a, a question I had. How, how is the B L M staff law enforcement wise?
Uh, we're down one ranger right now. Uh, one of our rangers got promoted to the uh, regional supervisor position, so we're down one on the Carson City District.
And how many do you have?
Uh, fully staffed, we have five.
Okay, thank you.
Anything, Commissioner Hendricks?
Yeah.
Further, okay.
I'll just talk about a couple fuels projects that we have going on in the pine nuts. Uh, this fall, we'll be treating uh, about thirteen hundred acres uh, in our upper colony unit. Uh, which is uh, the west side of Smith Valley. Uh, and then another two hundred and seventy acres up along San Diego. In the pine nuts. And uh, that's part of a larger project that goes into Douglas County. And, you know, as you well wear, it's been a slow fire year, so.
So far.
Yeah.
I've got a lot of tall weeds out there all over the place, including B L M, so we need to be very careful.
Yes, for sure.
And anything else, sir?
No, that really concludes my uh, I prepared statements, but if you have any questions, I'm willing to take them.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, I really question, but next, next time you come, could you bring us an overview on the wild horse population was in Lyon County and, and as opposed to A M L?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Keller, did you have anything? Nope. Thank you. Appreciate the update. Okay, we still have five minutes to keep me on track for the nine thirty. So we will go back to item twelve, elected official reports. Do we have any elected officials here that would like to talk? Okay, sir.
Mitch Brandingham, Chief Deputy with the Sheriff's Office. Uh, good morning, Commissioner. Thank you for having us this morning, Mister Haskin. I wanted to give you a quick update on a couple things. I know we're moving quickly, so it was brief. Um, yesterday at ten o'clock in the morning, we did hold the press conference at the Sheriff's Office during the Naomi Arian case. I would like to start by saying our, our condolences, thoughts and prayers are with the Arian family during this difficult time for them. Uh, thank you to uh, Commissioner Hockaday, Mister Haskin for attending. I would also like to give a special thanks to Miss Taylor Allison. She was instrumental in putting that press conference together. It wouldn't have gone off the way it did without her help. Um, the press conference was streamed live on the news. Um, that has been posted to the social media accounts. Um, and I would encourage any citizens or members of the county to take a look at that, that conference and be aware of the things that went on there in that investigation. Uh, we did put together about a thirty, thirty-five minute presentation. Um, and if any of the commissioners would like to view that privately, we would like to make that available for you, um, and answer any additional questions that you have regarding that investigation. Uh, we have the Fair and Rodeo kicking off. Uh, this weekend, we will have a booth on site there. And uh, we will have Sheriff's Office staff available to Fair and Rodeo, so please stop by and see us. Who would like to see on that over there. Uh, we have Dayton Validates coming up on September sixteenth and seventeenth. Um, we will have Sheriff's Office personnel over at that event. Now, we are looking forward to seeing members of the community out there. We have the uh, Sheriff's Backpack Drive coming up on August twenty-sixth. Uh, the backpack drive is to put uh, backpacks in every student's hands in Lyon County, so they have a way to get their books and supplies to school. Uh, that will be from nine to three, all of our Sheriff's Office substations around the county. So all people need to do is stop by the substation, say hi, interact with our deputies, and we'll, we'll give their kids a backpack. Uh, we are participating in a school supply drive in Fernley at Walmart on the twenty-fifth. Uh, we're going to be stuffing uh, police vehicles with school supplies to help make sure the P T As have the things that they need. We've uh, also started laying the groundwork for a traffic unit within the Sheriff's Office. We're in the infancy of that project, uh, but if you have a supervisor being assigned to start building that out, recognizing that traffic is probably the number one law enforcement complaint we have around the county. So I'm looking forward to seeing the, the briefing that Sheriff Pope has for that in the future. Um, he had a, a conflict scheduled this morning, so he's unavailable to be here. Um, the proactive law enforcement events around the county continued. Uh, we, we do have some more proactive saturation patrols upcoming in the near future. Um, obviously, those dates aren't being announced publicly, but uh, everybody should be on the lookout for those events as they come up. And uh, I, I shared a uh, a, a short story with the, the city council in Fernley last night I want to share with you. Um, we had a, a pursuit on Saturday night in the county, and the deputies were pursuing a wanted felon and uh, about halfway through the pursuit, he ended up pulling his vehicle over, got out, turned himself in, and said, we don't run from uh, law enforcement Lyon County anymore. We don't get away. So um, the, the proactive enforcement efforts are working. They are being effective, and uh, we are going to keep applying that pressure. So now that being said, I would like to answer any questions if you have.
Questions?
No questions. Just wanted to thank you for doing such an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Yeah, again, not, not a question, just a comment. The next time you guys do a saturation patrol in the Dayton area, I'd like to ride along.
Absolutely. I'll get with you and set that up.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Appreciate the update. And it is nine twenty-nine going, nine thirty. So we have, uh, Dr. Titus. Come up, we will slide down.
Mr. Chair, I do believe you need to recess to reconvene as the Board of Health.
Yeah, I'm reading. Okay, we're going to, uh, recess. Actually recess to reconvene as the Board of Health and, um, Dr. Titus. Sure meeting.
Let's see, I assume that we are already on, and thank you, everybody, for being here. I'll call this meeting to order, um, now that we have reconvened as a Board of Health. Uh, I believe we do have to take roll call. So all the commissioners are here is Mr. Jacobson, uh, absent, so with one absent, um, so noted, and I don't see any, uh, public comment at the start of this, but, uh, all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and maybe, whoops, sorry about that. That's my own bed, um. That's my uh, all matters listed on this consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted on by the Board of Commissioners with one action without any, oh, I'm sorry, where I'm, I'm reading the wrong.
Madam Chair, um, the, excuse me, I, uh, we need to note that the sheriff is also not present.
Very good, thank you. So, um, anyway, and there's no public here, so we're all, any public participation, if anybody wants, now's the time on the Board of Health, that's number seven. Uh, if none, then we are going to go ahead and move on. So, um, under eight A for presentation only, um, presentation on Lion County's Youth Risk Behavior Survey results from two thousand and twenty-one, and I believe we have a Kristen Clements Knoll, Dr. Knoll is on. I see her there. It looks like you're
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, hopefully I can share my screen, um, but, uh, thank you, Commissioners, for inviting me to present results from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, um, Kristen Clements Knoll, for the record. Um, I'm not allowed to share my screen. It says it's disabled. I don't know if someone can enable that.
You should be able to now.
Perfect. Thank you. Can you all see this?
Yes.
Yes.
So I'm going to be presenting findings from the two thousand and twenty-one Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which is conducted in all, um, high schools and middle schools in Nevada. We did just complete data collection, um, for the two thousand and twenty-three YRBS. We're currently working on cleaning, um, that information, and I'd be happy to come back and present more results when th- those data are available. So just a little bit of information about the, uh, Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Um, we have a, a very strong collaboration with the Nevada Department of Education and the Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health. Um, normally, um, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is funded by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and they fund states to, to conduct a state-level, uh, YRBS survey only in high schools. So in Nevada, that would translate in two thousand and twenty-one to approximately thirty-six high schools statewide. The majority of those high schools, of course, would be in Lion, and, and sorry, not in Lion County, in Clark County. Um, so there would only be a handful of rural counties sampled, uh, maybe five schools in Washoe County. So the Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health, um, contracts with, um, our university to sample all regular public charter alternative high schools. And we also conduct a comprehensive middle school survey. So all high schools and middle schools, except for private schools, participate in the survey. Um, so in, that's usually about a little over two hundred high schools, um, and middle schools statewide. Um, previously, counties would have either active or passive parental permission, but due to, um, Senate Bill sixty-nine, which passed a few years ago, uh, statewide now, um, we use passive parental permission for the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which has greatly reduced, um, the difficulties that teachers have. Um, it's, it's definitely minimized the difficulty, um, in the classroom. It's an anonymous survey. Um, youth can choose to participate or skip any questions. Um, they don't have to participate, even if their parents did not opt out. Um, and we do have youth who only, um, answer a couple of questions, but the majority of youth do complete the entire survey. So just a little bit, um, of information on the response rates for, for Lion County, um, for our high school sample, and again, um, starting back in two thousand and fifteen, we are doing a census of all high schools. Uh, the response rate was pretty low. We had a school, um, that did not participate. Um, it was thirty-nine percent, and you'll see that that's gone up to fifty-eight point six percent in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, will be much higher, um, than that in two thousand and twenty-three. I believe we're close to seventy percent now. For the middle school survey, um, our most recent data, we were at a two thousand and twenty-one for response rate, um, which is excellent. Uh, we will, um, be sampling one, uh, middle school that did not participate in the two thousand and twenty-three, so we can get the, uh, response rates up for two thousand and twenty-three as well. Um, so the information I'm going to show you, we wait all the data based on, um, the sex, race, ethnicity, um, and grade level in the region. Um, so we, we do everything at the regional level, not the state level. It is important to note that in two thousand and twenty-one, because, um, schools were not in session in person, um, in, in uh, spring, when we usually administer the survey, we did have to sample in the fall semester. Um, we had a great window where, um, COVID cases were quite low, students returned to school, um, and so actually our, our samples are, um, as good, if not better than our two thousand and nineteen, uh, data. However, the sample is younger. Um, so at the state level, we've weighted the data by age, so we can look at trends, um, but that's difficult to do at the, the county level. So I've been asked to talk about, um, some of the mental health outcomes in the survey. We certainly have other, um, other indicators, and I can point you to all of our, our reports. Um, and I'm happy to provide other information that you may need. So I'm going to first start with the, a high school survey. Um, so in, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, we had just about three hundred, um, students participate in the high school survey. We wait the data, um, so it represents the data we get from the school district, um, in terms of age, race, ethnicity, and sex, in case there was any, uh, non-response. And these are just a couple of, uh, sort of additional, um, social demographic, uh, characteristics. In two thousand and twenty-one, thirty-eight percent of the, um, Lion County School District High School students um, reported that they qualified for or received a free or reduced lunch. That was a little higher at that point, um, because we were, um, the state was ensuring that, um, you know, all kids had access to this program during, during COVID. Um, five point eight percent, um, were living in a, um, active military, um, household. Um, eight point three percent, um, reported food insecurity, so not having enough food to eat when they were hungry. I'm sorry, housing insecurity, um, was, uh, homeless or not having a stable house. Um, so could be staying in a hotel, staying in a, um, in a car or, um, or just, uh, moving from house to house, um, but without a stable household. Food insecurity was ten point three percent. Um, we do, in the high school survey, ask a, um, sexual identity question, and twenty-seven point six percent reported that they were, uh, gender non-binary, um, or transgender. I'm sorry, uh, six point nine percent, and twenty-seven percent self-reported that they were, um, lesbian, gay, bisexual, um, or another, um, another sexual identity other than heterosexual. So here are some of the, um, questions that we ask on the, um, high school survey. We ask the identical questions on the middle school survey. Um, and so here we see, um, past twelve-month reports, um, of depressive symptoms, and this is ongoing depressive symptoms for a week or longer. Uh, the Nevada statistics are in the light gray. Lion County is in the darker blue. And you see that forty-nine percent of high school students in Lion County reported, um, depressive symptoms in the past twelve months. Um, that's a little higher than the state level, but not much higher. Uh, non-suicidal self-injury was very similar statewide to Lion County with, uh, twenty-eight percent of youth, high school youth in Lion County reporting this behavior in the last twelve months. In terms of the suicide indicators, um, these again are all in the past twelve months. Um, so, uh, just about a quarter of youth in Lion County had bought about, um, attempting suicide. Twenty-two percent made a plan, and twelve, twelve point three percent, um, had, um, actually attempted suicide with the intent to die in the last year. Um, those numbers are extremely similar to the state estimate, statewide estimates. We have, um, another question. This is, this is a question on really whether the youth perceived that they were receiving the help they need. So, um, this would be youth who were feeling sad, empty, empty, hopeless, angry, anxious. Um, so really, some of those internalizing symptoms in the past, um, year, whether they received the kind of help they needed. And we have, uh, sixty-five percent of, of high school students in Lion County saying they never or rarely received the help they needed. Um, but eighteen point seven percent saying they always received the help. Again, this does not mean they weren't receiving services, but they didn't feel that they were getting the kind of help they needed. So this was their, their impression of, of that assistance. Um, for many years, Nevada, um, has asked, um, a series of questions on adverse childhood experiences. Um, now this is becoming standard on the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, but it wasn't, um, in years past. Um, so again, you see, like, uh, Nevada is light gray, uh, Lion County is the darker blue. Um, and this would be sort of lifetime experience, um, of these, of these adverse childhood, um, adversities. So eight point eight percent self-reported, um, sexual abuse, thirty-two point seven percent self-reported physical abuse. These are both a little bit lower than the, um, state average. And sixty-eight point, um, one percent reported verbal abuse. Um, we have a new physical neglect, uh, question, um, that was added in two thousand and twenty-one, and nine point six percent uh, reported, um, physical neglect in the past, and it, at any time in the past. So most of those abuse and neglect questions were a little bit lower, um, in terms of household stability. Um, these questions, um, are, are kind of getting at other things that might be happening in the, um, in the household that might contribute um, to poor mental health and other poor health outcomes. Um, and you do see many of these are higher in Lion County, so, um, twenty-seven point seven percent had witnessed domestic violence, um, compared to twenty-one percent at the state level. Forty-eight percent, almost half, um, said there was a, um, an adult in the household who, um, had some kind of a mental health, um, issue. Um, forty-two point nine percent said there was a parent or guardian in the household who had a substance abuse problem. Um, this is a newer question we added in two thousand and twenty-one, which is a standard, standard on the, um, in, on the inventory, which is whether a parent or guardian had ever been incarcerated or in jail, and twenty-four point nine percent, um, of, of high school students in Lion County reported affirmative, um, and then twenty-seven percent had witnessed, um, neighborhood violence. If you look at sort of the cumulative, um, adverse childhood experience, um, score, um, to see, uh, you know, what proportion of youth had multiple, um, childhood adversities, you see a very similar proportion of youth in Lion County to the, to the state average, reporting, um, no adverse childhood experiences. Um, that lower ace level, having one ace or two aces, is lower in Lion County. Um, but if you looked at that cumulative score, it's a little bit higher, um, for having three aces, or that should actually say four or more aces, because we have, um, we have eight questions in the high school survey. We also, um, ask a series of questions about, um, kind of resiliency. Um, and so we have a scale that looks at parent-child or household, um, adult, uh, parent-child communication. Um, and you see the percent is pretty similar, so, um, between Lion County and the state in terms of talking with parents about their problems, um, talking with their parents about what's right and wrong, feeling comfortable, talking with their parents. This, I think this question is actually about, you know, something like sensitive topics or important topics. Um, and then we have a, um, three questions that look at school connectedness, and all of these are, are pretty similar. Um, there is a little bit lower, um, proportion of youth who said that teacher speech, uh, treat students fairly in Lion County. Um, but generally, the resiliency questions are pretty, pretty similar Lion County high school students versus Nevada State. So moving on to the, um, middle school results, um, you know, again, we wait the data, so it represents, um, you know, the demographics of the county. Um, fifty-five percent, um, said they were receiving free or reduced lunch. Again, that's going to be very high because of, of the COVID, um, stay-at-home orders at that point. Uh, six point nine percent, um, had a, a, a family member, adult in the household who was on active military duty. Um, only one point four percent reported housing insecurity and eight point six percent reported, uh, food insecurity. So, um, when looking at the mental health indicators, again, these are the same questions we use in the high school survey. Um, you'll see the prevalence is a little lower simply because the middle school students are younger, um, and they've had less time to sort of experience things. Um, but, uh, little higher, um, a proportion of youth in middle school youth in Lion County reporting depressive symptoms, uh, compared to the state level, uh, thirty-four point six percent. Um, and quite a bit higher, um, proportion of youth in Lion County reported engaging in non-suicidal, um, self-injury. And that would be things like cutting, burning, uh, but not, not intending, um, to kill themselves. Um, also a little higher suicide ideation, uh, about a quarter, a little over a quarter, um, making a suicide plan, but the actual attempts, um, were very similar, um, in Lion County to the state, to the state average. We go. Um, in terms of the adverse childhood experiences, um, the abuse questions, um, did have slightly higher prevalence in, in Lion County um, compared to the state average for middle school students. And, um, for most of the, um, sort of household, uh, problems, household dysfunction, we see higher prevalence in Lion County, um, particularly, um, self-report of household substance abuse. So this would be, um, a parent or guardian who has a substance use problem. Um, little bit of a similar pattern, um, that we saw with the high school students with the cumulative score, particularly with that highest, um, level of, of, um, a score for more being higher in Lion County, um, than Nevada. And again, the resiliency measures are, are very, very similar, um, between at, at the, um, in Lion County, the middle school students self-report and the, um, state, state average. So I was asked to talk briefly about statewide, uh, mental health trends from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-one. As I had mentioned earlier, the sample was, uh, younger in, um, in two thousand and twenty-one, because when we had to sample, uh, the beginning of the school year versus the end of the school year. So at the state level, we were able to wait the data by age to account for this. And just briefly, because I know we're running short on time, um, for the high school sample, we see that pretty much for all the mental health indicators, there was an increase in poor mental health, um, in two thousand and twenty-one compared to two thousand and nineteen. And all of these, we have the confidence intervals, uh, put here in P-values. All of these are significant, um, trends. Um, and that includes all of the suicide indicators. However, um, for middle school students, um, we did not see that increase, um, other than, um, the question on being electronically bullied, um, which did increase significantly in that time period, but depressive symptoms were near identical, non-suicidal self-injury, suicide ideation and attempts. There was a slight increase. This is just barely significant in a suicide plan. So, uh, at the state level, um, we saw that, you know, that, and again, this, this time period really covered the stay-at-home orders because we were able to sample. before COVID and then right when, where, when students returned back to school in that, that fall semester. So seemed to have more of an impact on the high school students and the middle school students. And we're seeing that nationally as well. Probably because some of that stability in the home and resiliency with, with parent connection is stronger at a younger age. I don't know how I'm doing on time. I was asked to share just a few mental health disparities for our sexual and gender minorities. Do we have time or should I go ahead and just answer questions?
Well, I think we're good with time. If you want to go ahead and do that, and then I know some questions. Thank you.
Okay. So this is at the, at the state level. Partly because of small sample size, we can't really, we could probably look at some regions, but we can't do this at the, at the county level. The first is looking at gender identity. This is a little bit of a busy slide, but you'll see that the very light blue here are students who, who self-identified as not being transgender. And then the gray and the little bit darker blue would be transgender. And then those who are questioning are not sure. The reason we separate these here in our state report, we, we tend to put those together is just to show that we have another question that says, I don't know what this question is asking. And those, those youth are put to missing. So those who stated that they, you know, were not sure. It's not that they're not sure what the question is asking, but you can see in terms of prevalence, they're very similar to those who are identi- are identifying as transgender. And so for all of the mental health indicators, the health disparity is significantly higher in those who are self-identifying as transgender or not sure if they're transgender compared to heterosexual, I mean, non-transgender students. And, you know, remember I said for the high school students, we saw that there was an increase in many of these mental health outcomes from 2019 to 2021. What you can see here is that it did increase slightly for the header, for the non-transgender students, but it was a very sharp increase. This is depressive symptoms for students who were identifying that they were transgender. We see an even greater health disparity. So there's not actually a huge change for the non-transgender identifying students in terms of non-suicidal self-injury, but a very strong, we see quite a bit of a difference here in the health disparity in 2021. And we see the same thing with suicide ideation. Not quite as strong with suicide attempts, you know, an increase in both. But again, a big health disparity in both years. And just briefly, we see the same pattern. If we look at sexual identities, so light blue is comparing students who self-reported that they were heterosexual and darker blue are those who were self-reporting that they were lesbian, gay, bisexual. We have a whole other kind of list of questioning identities. And all of the mental health indicators, including not getting the help they need are much higher in, in that group. Not quite as strong of a, of a change over time, but we do see those health disparities widened from 2019 to 2021. Same pattern with non-suicidal self-injury and suicide ideation, but not a big difference between the two groups in suicide attempts. So that's all the information I have for now. I will, I don't know if you guys are able to use this QR code. I can leave this up for a few moments, but this will take you to a link where we have all of our reports. We are, as I said, actively working all summer. We've been working to clean the 2023 data so that we can get that information out. Cause I think people are, you know, sort of very interested to see what the trends are now that youth have returned to school for an entire year, year and a half.
Great. Well, thank you for that. And I'm going to open it up to the board for any questions. Any commissioners or members have questions? Okay, go ahead. Commissioner Keller.
I was listening to your presentation and I would have really loved to see the sample survey that was given out. So that at least I knew where, where you started, what the, how it was worded, what direction it was given, you know. I'm also looking at some of this stuff is it looks like it's just adding on with no solution at the end. It's like trying to build an agenda to, to, to have, to form a problem than, than you can address. It looks like you're headed toward a sexual identity and that's where this is all coming from. As far, far as what I'm getting out of the, out of the presentation, I want, I'd really like to know what's been done to, for the younger generation as the development age, what was done to make them so that they can handle life as it is. You know, when you fall down, you don't, everybody doesn't fall down on a padded surface. Everybody needs to go through ups and downs and the sooner you can emotionally take care of that, then you're not protected all through life. I noticed that the protection now goes all the way up into where people are 26 years old and still being protected. They've never gone emotionally to solve the problem. And so to me, you're just going down that road and that's what I'm getting out of this. I'd like to see what the other side of that is. You know, all the way back to when everybody got a trophy for sports. To me, you have to learn to be the, you didn't get first. You know, that's an emotional thing and with social media and everything else. And now I'd like to see that component a little bit more. Also, I saw that one thing on food insecurity. And I didn't quite follow that because of the way you said it was. They, they felt that they didn't have enough food. And I hate to tell you, everybody in my neighborhood growing up, every, every boy that I knew didn't have enough food because unless you said, was there apples in the, or vegetables and stuff like that? But I would answer that as there was never enough food, even though we had plenty of food to eat. You know, I wanted more cookies. I wanted more jerky, potato chips and everything else. So I, I'd like to know how that question was.
Yeah. So the, the survey is posted so that QR code and we always, we post the survey so that the parents can access it. So that, that's posted on the website. And the questions are, so that particular question, I don't have the exact wording, but it's, it was phrased more. You know, in the past, and I forget if it's past month or past, it might be past month. You know, how often, you know, did you go hungry because there was not enough food in the house to eat? So it is, it is phrased with the, you know, did you go hungry without food? There, these questions are considered standardized. They're, they're the questions that are used, used nationally, but all of that information is, is posted. You're absolutely correct with the, with the resiliency. Unfortunately, the survey is, is funded to be a risk survey. We, we are able to, all of those questions we embedded on parent, child communication, school connectedness. Those are state added questions, but it's really hard to fit those questions in a, in a survey that has to be completed in one, one classroom setting. But the younger group, I believe that the resiliency during the pandemic was really that they benefited more by in many cases, having a, a family member at home developmentally, when kids are getting older, they're more connected to their peers. That becomes more important in the parent connection. And so I think those youth suffered a little bit more during that time period. I only showed the sexual and gender identity disparities, but there are other subgroups that where we have higher prevalence of mental health outcomes that would be important, important to look at. It gets difficult to do that sometimes at the county level, but we definitely do that at the state level. We, we conduct the survey on behalf of all of these state offices so that those programs can use the results to write grants to improve mental health, sexual behavior, sexual health. All, you know, the survey includes all sorts of dietary questions. We have questions on physical activity. So those programs use this information to not only obtain new grant funding, but evaluate those programs. And then we conduct this survey routinely to see if we're having an impact. So for example, you know, statewide and in many counties, there was a, a pretty, there's been, there's been a good impact on mu- much substance use in our state with our youth and our rates are lower than the national average with the exception of cannabis, which has kind of stayed stable. And we've also seen a reduction, for example, statewide and in most counties in bowling. And those were two areas where there was a lot of sort of active prevention efforts. But we use the data to evaluate how well are those things working over time. Not sure if I answered all your questions, but I, yeah, I encourage you to, and I can send a copy of the surveys also if that's, if that's helpful as well as the presentation.
Thank you. I, I did take a picture of your, your screen there. So I, I do have that information. And I'm, I'm glad to see you have that substance abuse in there because that to me is one of the biggest things that we face in the rural atmosphere. Thank you.
Yep. Any further questions?
My only question was how this information was going to be used and she just answered that. So.
Anybody else? So I, I have a couple of questions for you. Doing a quick survey on the number of students in Lyon County. We have about just, just below 9,000 students in Lyon County, of which about 2,680 are high school students. And I'm wondering, it looked like your N number was 286 or something like that in Lyon County in the beginning. So statistically, it's a pretty small piece of, of a slice of the, the students that we have here. And I'm concerned about accuracy and how you can extrapolate anything from that small of a number versus the, the, the almost, you know, 2,600 that we do have. So that's my first question. Second question is those that choose to answer that, these surveys like this, are they self-selecting? I mean, what, because they were feeling anxious, they felt, oh, I should fill this out versus those that felt fine. And do you see much of that and that self-selection of which students filled these surveys out?
Yeah. So two, there's two questions there. So the first is you're correct. The sampling is not, so the survey is a state level survey. We, we established the sampling frame to ensure that rural counties are represented other than, as I said before, we would randomly select with CDC. A couple, you know, it'd only be really honestly Lyon County may not be selected at all if we had followed the national sampling. So we really, the, the sampling is really set up at the, not at the county level, but at the regional level. And so, and that aligns primarily with the coalition, with the coalition networks. So it is true that it's a smaller number of students. However, we have very little non-response. So most students agree to complete the survey and complete all the questions to the survey. Most parents agree to allow their child to participate, although we do have some declines. And so we wait, that's the whole point of waiting the data is to account for, well, what if the people who take the survey are a little different than those who do not? But yes, you're, and I should have mentioned this at the beginning. We're always hesitant with the county level results because it would be a very different survey. If we said, we're going to come in and we're going to sample, you know, 80% of the students in Lyon County. That would be, you know, a very different sampling frame, which we wouldn't be able to do with our, our current funding. So it is at the kind of regional level. And as you know, I presented to the couple of the different regional behavioral boards. And at the coalition level, we have greater stability for sure in the estimates. We do feel that in Lyon County at just the aggregate level, because we wait the data that the estimates are useful for planning. If you see, you know, if you see different trends, for example. But absolutely it's, it's more at the, and we did, you know, originally it's everything set up at the coalition level. So Lyon County is combined with other counties.
Great. Thank you for that. Because I would point out, and most people in this room know that Lyon County as a whole is a pretty diverse county. And if we look up the 20 different schools that we have in Lyon County, where they're located from an urban area such as Fernley and Silver Springs, even Yarrington, Dayton versus the rural areas, say Smith Valley and what the little micro climates are within those. And I think for the county purposes of this board, to be able to extrapolate what the importance is and where does the school district need to focus, say their limited amount of counselors or limited amount of social workers, so that we can actually use some of this data and to really help the, the youth. I'll be very interested to see what the outcome is from the 2023 data that will have the 2019, 2021 and 2023. And with that, I want to thank you for, for being here today and the information. And any other questions before I close? Commissioner Keller?
I, I want to thank you for asking that question because that really brought up some more, more topic for me. Anyway, I was hearing that you said the parents were asked for permission on certain, one of those surveys. Is there a survey that the parents actually take to as far as some of this? So that we can see where the, where the child says one thing interprets his world different than what the parents see as their reality?
Yeah, not, not for this survey. This is not, you know, it's a, it's surveillance just, and it's just surveillance with youth. We do do, I do other studies where we do recruit youth and parents and look at concordance. It's surprisingly similar in many areas. Sexual behaviors, substance use behavior is very similar. We do see underreporting with parents with the adverse childhood experiences, which would be, you know, obviously that's to be expected. So, but that, that's not done with this survey. No. And, and we have oversampled in counties, you know, in it on year, if the county was interested in a particular year, you know, over sampling or having a special project, but it's sort of like an addition to the regular, regular sampling frame. The numbers are higher in the 2023 sample because we had even better response in Lyon County, particularly in the high school.
Great. Well, thank you. Oh, now we have another question. See, the more questions we ask, the more, the more answers you give, the more questions we ask. So.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. How much does all this cost? And, and, and how's it funded?
So the, the CDC funding is a hundred thousand dollars a year, which sounds like a lot, but it's not. So every school receives, receives packets for this, for the sampled students. And then responses are mailed back from the rural counties in, in neighboring counties. On some years we have collected in person from, from Lyon County. So the additional funding is about 150,000. It comes from the Division of Public and Behavioral Health from all of their different, all their different health programs. So one program may put in 5,000 nutrition, one program may put in 10,000. So it's, it's actually not, it's not highly funded.
Yeah, because I, I, I agree with the earlier comment. This is kind of a self-perpetuating study. So.
Yeah, it's, it's surveillance. And the idea of surveillance is to see, you know, are we moving the needle over time? Like, like I said, we have in many health indicators. And I do, I do believe that's, that's due to good, you know, on the ground work and prevention work. So, you know, we are able to see positive trends. We also see some that are worrisome that we need to keep an eye on. And so, yeah, I mean, that's the point is, you know, is to monitor these trends over time to see if we're, if we, if we don't ask, we don't know. But the, what do we do about it is a whole nother question. Hopefully, you know, people can use the data for their grant funding. I know we've been extremely successful because we do do our own survey to an earlier question about developmental priorities, you know, in my opinion, you know, based on all the research I've done, middle school, if, if not earlier is really where we need to be doing our prevention work and building that resiliency and that. And like you talked about earlier, the grit that you have. Because sometimes when we get to the point of high school, it's too late. Hardly any states do a middle school survey. They all survey and the CDC funding is just for the high school survey, not the middle school survey. So I believe that survey in particular is critical to monitoring how we're doing because that's a developmental age where you can have a very strong impact.
Uh, thank you. I have a comment, but I'm gonna keep it to myself.
Great. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. And with that, we'll, we'll close this. And again, thank you for your time, your information and for being here today.
Thank you.
We'll move on to 8B, which is a presentation discussion seeking board of health input on obtaining funding for Quad County Health District exploratory study. And I believe Shayla is prepared to do that.
Good morning. Shayla Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services. I don't have a presentation this morning, but I wanted to bring this board with some information to open discussion regarding this future project. So we're looking to receive funding to conduct a feasible feasibility study for Quad County Health District. Currently we pay an assessment to the state for public health services. Right now, the current contract is 159,000 a year. And in addition to that, we're required to provide the space for community health nurses. So their office space, their exam rooms, things of that nature. This by no means covers the full cost of the service. This by no means covers the full cost of the services. Um, from my understanding, the state also uses grant funding and general fund to support the required tasks, which include environmental health, epidemiology and community health nursing. The state over the years has been very supportive of wanting to transition services to local jurisdictions and have continued to encourage this word feasible, like piecemealing. What can local jurisdictions take over, starting perhaps first with epidemiology or perhaps with environmental health? Um, none of which we do at this time, but there's been, um, particularly pre-COVID, many meetings where um, Julia Peak with the state has encouraged, talked about what these things could look like. This past year, the Central Nevada Health District was formed. This includes the city of Fallon, Churchill County, Mineral County, Eureka County and Pershing County. They have a website. Uh, they are, I believe essentially fully operational at this point in time. Um, and you can read their about section, but essentially they were formed out of concerns from the state's inability to adequately respond to these more rural counties' needs during the COVID pandemic. Legislation was also passed this last, um, session, one allowing them to include non-adjacent counties within their district and then also SB one eighteen that designates funding to health districts. And this included Central Nevada Health District, Southern Nevada Health District and Washoe County. The Quad Counties are perhaps missing out on this funding opportunity because we are not a health district. Um, there's been talks for years, um, many of the individuals whom are a part of these talks have since retired or moved out of their positions. Um, but the concept of a Quad County Health District has been, uh, lingering for, for over a decade, I want to say. Um, particularly with the Quad County Health Preparedness already established. And we, I believe, were very well positioned during the COVID pandemic to be able to provide those vaccines and those testing pods because of our partnership and our delegation of authority to Quad County Health Preparedness. We did not suffer the extreme disparity in those activities like some of these other counties that formed in Central Nevada Health District did. Um, where the state wasn't out actively doing health, um, doing vaccine, they weren't actively out doing testing to the degree of which the community needed to be able to, you know, survive during that period of time where we were able to rely on Quad County Health. And, um, and they did a fantastic job from my personal opinion. So with that, this study is to explore the possibilities of what a Quad County, um, Health District structure could look like. Um, to allow for the most informed decision to be made in the future as there is potential for future legislation changes regarding health districts and public health. So I wanted to open that up to you all for discussion, um, do my best to answer any questions regarding the concept. Um, and then highlight that on consent agenda today is to accept funding for us to move forward with the contractor. And the idea in the future is that you all would be, um, stakeholders, a part of that study that you guys would be interviewed individually and discussed with an individual basis um, with that contractor in regards to your hopes and dreams for the future of a health district or public health in Lyon County and what that engagement could look like. And that we would bring that contractor forward to future Board of Health meetings to present on their progress and then eventually present on the outcome, which would be a report of what different models could be and, uh, what different funding structures could look like and what different pieces could be going forward.
So, um, I'm sure we have all, all have questions, but I want to start with, you said on the consent agenda prior, there was a, it's already been approved to hire a contractor?
No, it's on today.
Okay.
Yep, it's on today's consent agenda.
Okay.
Post this meeting.
Can, could, would you tell me the amount that that's going to be since I won't be here for that?
It is two separate amounts. So the state is, um, needing to fund it. Um, first period through November, second period, then starting, um, I want to say December through Sept-, um, through September of next year. And give me just a second and I can tell you what this year's and then what next year's will be.
So we're looking at fifteen H, uh, on the future agenda here?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you for that. And also along the same line, just so the board mem- knows, and I'm sure they do, and members of audience, anybody else listening and interested, we, we have kind of a quasi Quad County Health District, uh, and we have for years. And I'm not sure anybody was on this, um, commission at the time that was actually formed, um, not knowing, and I think part of the discussion, if you do go forward and decide to, to contract with these folks to look at the feasibility. One of the critical questions that I, I would think would be important to answer is we, we actually receive these services for all intents and purposes now um, at a X dollar cost that we already have. Um, and what would be the actual benefit of would it cost this county more, Lyon County more to formal, formal, uh, health, Quad County Health District versus where I think we're sitting in a pretty good position using Carson City as our main resource now. And I used to be, as your county health officer, uh, any infectious disease were, was reported to me by, from the state. And now it goes to Carson City and then they contact me. And all those things that Carson's already doing. And so would it be more beneficial to Carson for us to form a formal Quad County? Versus staying as it is, using those services. And I think those things really need to, in a, in a survey. And I think for me, I won't be at that, the next component of, of your decision processes. But I, but I think we really, it's worth the ask. I think it's worth the ask if the state's paying for this to see who would benefit the most. Um, what would the cost of be? What really additional information would you as a commissioner be able to obtain? And myself as your health officer, um, I think right now we use Carson City services. I don't know what we paid for all of that, but having that upfront and information that we can really put our, wrap our arms around would, would be a good discussion to have, um, moving forward. And then thoughts from?
Well, I'm, I'm looking the same thing. And, and what I want to know is what what are the restrictions? If we get into the Quad County, then all decisions being brought by Quad County compared to what we can do individually, even though we do go for benefits? Because we'll have the district, it doesn't hurt us. You know, so that's where I want to see.
You mean the autonomy of Lyon County, right?
Right.
Make our own choices at the time they're needed.
Sure. Um, on that note, in regards to the way that our services work right now with the state, we have little control over the services that are provided within that, um, assessment scenario. So community health nursing, for example, which is where this conversation, um, pre-pandemic really originated and why the desire really started to build is, um, a, a very generalized example, we have a large population of older adults. So our population is about twenty-four percent over the age of fifty-five. We have limited pneumonococcal, I can never say that right, vaccines available through our community health nursing. They focus on school-aged children and vaccines required for, um, school. We also have, uh, over twenty percent youth, right? We do have a large portion of youth. We need our youth vaccinated to be able to go to school. We need all of those things. But we have little say or control over additional services that are provided through our community health nursing to cover the full array of our population and what the true needs might actually be. So in a health district model, there is potential that we would have better control or say over what services are provided. Um, NRS right now is currently set up to allow for a health district. And what that looks like is the creation of additional board. Where commissioners from each county participating in that district are then, um, participatory on that health district board. And so it becomes a separate entity, but yet has a little bit more local say or input because we are represented in that fashion where right now our funding goes to the state, the state provides those services. Um, and they provide it, um, minimally with our input. Um, we absolutely can give them a call. We have a great relationship with them and the majority of, um, all things to be considered. Uh, don't want to knock them and attempting to carry the state balance for direct service. That's generally not the model across the United States. Um, it's not an easy thing for them to do, but that's where our ability to have input or control over what happens at that level is, uh, pretty minimal. Um, to answer your question, Dr. Titus, um, next year's requested budget, um, is seventy-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-two. And this year's budget is thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifteen, and that does include indirect for my department to manage the grant.
Further comments and questions?
Yeah. Also, if we get, get into this Quad County thing, is it, is it just done yearly? In other words, if we see that this isn't the direction we want to go, is there a way to get back out of it? Or are we tying it into a long-term thing that it's going to be extremely hard to get out of?
Right. And that's all, um, things that we're hoping this exploratory study can answer for us. So as stakeholders engaging in this process, um, having those concerns brought forward and having that contractor identify those things for us, um, looking at what current, um, legislation says we can and can't do, what might need to be changed to meet the needs that we would want. Um, and really taking all those things into consideration. So if it comes down the road where we do need to make a decision in regards to a health district versus, um, the county health or staying with the state, depending on how legislation goes in the future. Um, we'll have all of that information available to us to make the best decision for Lyon County.
But to be clear, there's no mandate in NRS now that we have to do this.
Not right now. That's correct. Um, there's, there's certainly, um, rumors that perhaps the state is going towards a decentralized public health model. Um, but by no means has anybody publicly made that, um, statement that is just, um, conversation that's had on the side.
Yes.
Can we try and understand?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, why don't we just join the Central Nevada? Instead of creating another new one and spend in a hundred and six thousand dollars to study it?
Well, we're, we're, I mean, we're not spending a hundred and six thousand dollars. We're receiving money from.
It's, it's tax money.
Tax money, yes.
So, yeah.
So it's public money. The state already has. So taxes that have already been acquired.
And, and I'm sure the state probably has other uses for it too.
Perhaps. I'm not too sure what, what their grants look like in regards to what they need to be utilized for. Um, because this isn't coming out of general fund. This is coming from a, a, a grant of which they've received in a different, whatever the trickle down looks like. Um, that's certainly a conversation you guys can have in regards to what that looks like in, um, in conversation with, uh, Central Nevada and then what that does with our relationship in regards to Quad County and Carson City where most of our population does travel into Carson City for health, um, needs. Some of our Silver Springs and some of our Yarrington travel into Fallon. And then a large portion of our friendly residents travel into Reno. So, um, Lyon County is very unique in the sense that we are, um, sort of spanning out everywhere we go to get our health needs met.
Further question?
Well, I have no problem with feasibility study. Uh, I mean, money's coming down for grants, but I would hope that it would be a neutral position saying, well, here's what we have, here's what we could have. And make that decision based on whether we're going to have an improvement or not.
Yes.
It wouldn't be, well, hey, we did the study, let's just go ahead and do it. I, I think that things probably are working. We've got a couple of problems here and there with, uh, you know, um, immunization or whatever. Can we fix those without going too far in the other direction and cutting off things that we really need?
Absolutely.
Right. And I, I, good point. And I think your point about, uh, doing the study, do we even need to do that or joining, um, could all be questions. The, the needs of the Central Lyon, um, district are a little bit different than our Central Nevada District, Health District is different than I think Lyon because of the points that Shayla made about where our folks in Lyon County go and use and access to healthcare. My again, my keys are the autonomy of Lyon County. Um, and can we get out of it? I think would be good, good. Is it really going to save us money or is it going to be more cumbersome and cost more money? And, and the resources, because one of the things that I will point out that the problem with Central, uh, Nevada District, they staffing, trying to get an administrator and, you know, seeing patients. I know it's been, uh, some, a few hurdles that I don't think they recognized at the time. Um, again, I, I, I for one would be a proponent of, of looking at really the benefit because the state is, is something the state wants to do. Um, but I think we, we could make sure as Commissioner Chair said, Huckaday, uh, that we wouldn't necessarily want to follow it based and there hopefully will be a neutral thing. Here's the cost, here's the benefit. Here's what the state provides and here's what this may offer us. And so, uh, you know, I, I think that that's fair and just joining the Central Nevada one would be one of the questions that, but I think it would be rather cumbersome. And mind you, in Central Nevada, not all counties join that that are uh, touching each other. And that was part of the NRS that we had to change the law that they didn't have to be contiguous in order for them to form this, this, um, this group. So, or the Central Nevada Health District. And that was a change in this most recent law. And so that was the key. All, there was a, a county who said, no, we don't want to be participants of this. We don't gain enough from you. So for doing that.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, for the record. Um, one other point I'd like to make about the Central Nevada Health District is that the counties that make that up, excuse me, are quite different than Lyon County in terms of population and size. So, um, we are much closer and more closely related to in size and, and demographics to Carson and Douglas and so.
Great. Thank you. So with that, then Shayla, is that all you had for, on that agenda? Is that all you had? Okay, great. We are, um, we'll move on then. Eight C is going to be, we're skipping over eight C because the presenter was not available.
Correct. And I hope to bring that back to you at the next Board of Health.
And so, um, I look, for just a minute, I have a, uh, just a at the, the chair's option here. I just want to give it a quick report and little infectious disease report, um, for the county, uh, you know, with all the mosquitoes that we have and there's some, uh, different districts that have a mosquito abatement programs and some do not. I'm sure some of the commissioners have gotten some phone calls regarding the number of mosquitoes that are out there. And what are we doing about it? And, uh, they might have gnats, et cetera. Uh, I was at a meeting in Churchill County a couple of weeks ago and somebody reported, and I said, fortunately, we have not seen any West Nile or Western equine, equine encephalitis. And somebody, uh, in the crowd popped, popped up and said, well, I'm, I'm on the Board of Health here in Churchill County. We've had a case of West Nile. So, um, I, I had to research that because no one had reported that to me. And so, uh, as you know, on this board, one of my roles is that as your health officer, I, I am, we have a state, um, county health officer meeting once a month with Julia Peak and the state health officer. So all of our, of your health officers are on this call once a month. And so the call that we had Monday, the first thing I said, well, wait a minute here, I'm hearing about West Nile. No one's reported to me West Nile. So I got everybody on, uh, you know, like what? You know, we haven't had any West Nile. So just for clarification, if there's rumors out there, even with all these mosquitoes, um, no one has had West Nile in the state of Nevada, Nevada. Not saying that somebody didn't present with maybe a headache or a symptom and had a test. That's different than no positive cases of West Nile. And the uh, county health officer from Washoe County said even their test studies, um, have all been negative. There was one case of, um, western equine encephalitis in a horse in Douglas County. But that was a horse that was at a horse show and it came in from California. So there's been no cases of, uh, any of those viral borne, um, diseases, uh, tick bor-, uh, borne diseases in the state of Nevada reported so far. And I even got a text just yesterday. They knew that I was going to be at this meeting and they just informed me that the Churchill County folks said absolutely not. So, uh, if you're hearing rumors on that, I, I don't like rumors. I like to have fact. And so, so far, if somebody says, oh, you know, I heard at a meeting in Churchill County, you have West Nile. That's just not the case. Um, we're hoping that we, we stay that way. I, I know there's some wood here to knock on, so I will do that and hopefully we'll stay that way. But uh, again, um, in the past and before any members on this commission have been here, I've asked to, to even put on the ballot, uh, for, for say, Smith Valley districts, and you know, to have a mosquito abatement program, it's very expensive and people have always voted it down. So fortunately in Mason Valley, you have a program. And I'm not sure about all the other districts, but trying to keep all the mosquitoes, um, as, as, um, under control as possible as well. And I, I recommend it. Uh, I, I'm a person that believes that you have to take care of yourselves sometimes and making sure people use adequate mosquito, mosquito spray and, and cover yourselves up and all of that. So with that, any questions for me as your health officer? Without that, then I'm going to, uh, motion that this meeting be closed. And we'll have, unless we have public participation before we close this particular section. So is there any members of the public that have, um, would like to participate while they're online or, or Zoom or in the room? Seeing or hearing none, I will take a motion to close this Board of Health.
I'll make a motion to close your Board of Health meeting.
So, any, uh, comments? All in favor?
Hi.
And thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Take a five-minute break. We'll reconvene at ten thirty-five. Take a five-minute break, we'll reconvene at ten thirty-five. All right, it's ten thirty-six and we're going to reconvene. We are down to item thirteen, appointed official rep- oh. Oh, okay. Yeah, I didn't see anybody else jump up, but did we have any further comments from elected officials? Doesn't look like it. Elected officials, last chance. All right, go on to appointed official reports. Do I have any appointed official reports? Text, we got texts coming in.
Josh Fuller, Lyon County Councilor, for the record.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I just have a comment, is, is there a significance with the white hat and the black hat? Just saying.
We should try to budget time too, right? Okay, so just to report to the board, uh, the. There's an issue at the justice courts, the states. Administrative Office of the Courts has changed to a new software. They're in the middle of changing to a new software since January. For them, we've used, uh, one of their softwares for probably over a decade now and they're changing the software. Unfortunately, that transition is not going well. The financial reports don't work, the regular reports don't work. And we're in this a number of months and it sounds like maybe there may be. It's possible that they're going to cancel the contract with that then. With that being said, a number of entities in the states are not on the state software. They contract with their own software. So there's a possibility to have our justice courts function efficiently. That we may be coming back to the board with the proposal to look at a software shopping to hold that internally. It does come with a fiscal cost. If we stay with the, the software that is chosen by the Administrative Office of the Courts, they pay the fees. For that, um, upfront for the implementation costs, we just pay the annual user fees. But if the software is not going to work, we don't have. As much staffing as some of the other larger. Can't even use larger counties and more of the third largest counties, some of the other justice courts out there to sit there and do a lot of the reporting and things in Excel. And by hand to keep track of everything that's going in that the software is supposed to do. So we may be coming back to the board, uh, in the future with, with a discussion on purchasing some software, potentially going with. The same software vendor that does our district report. Case management system. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that discussion. I'll be having a kickoff meeting with the Justice of the Peace this Friday. This Friday, yes, I guess tomorrow on that topic. Uh, so that's all I have for you, other than it is very early, so please come out. I don't care if you have a black hat or a white hat, you're welcome to go.
Or no hat.
Question, question.
I just wanted to ask you, is there the, so we're not satisfied with the system? Are the other ones not satisfied too? Can they all bind together? To address it with the state?
They've been having those discussions and there have been discussions during those meetings because they do group meetings with the states and. There's also been discussions, we need to talk to the, uh, the state's. Supreme Court members and get this process moving better, but when you have a non-responsive or a possibly unresponsive vendor. That's a challenge for everybody and so. I think we're to the point that maybe it's better off for us to be on our own potentially with a proven software that we know works.
If we go on our own, is there a way to combine with the other people that want to go on their own to where we get like a user? So the, the cost is different. It's kind of like what you're doing with the state, but set up a separate group?
We can have those discussions and I will bring that up at the meeting tomorrow. Also. I don't know if you're aware, but anytime we do software, I get into my negotiation mode because it's like buying something in Mexico. Um, they have a fixed cost for what they, they have for you and other than implementation, it costs them nothing to provide additional. Software to you because they already have a developer, so we will have those type of discussions on price when we get to the.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just to comment, because the state doesn't have a good track record of choosing software companies. DMV might be one example. I think they wasted over eleven million dollars. So I, I, I encourage you to have those discussions about going on our own.
You'd also think that it has some leverage, you know, with all of the problems across the state with this software. That we'd be able to go in and say, fix it or you're all gone. We'll get somebody else. I, I, I don't understand why they're not doing that if there's such a significant problem.
I am not in those conversations. It's a very valid point.
Thank you. Any further?
Thank you.
Any other appointed officials? No, then we are done with item thirteen. Uh, we're at item fourteen, Advisory Board Reports. Uh, do we have any Advisory Board Reports, uh, Zoom in-house? I don't see any hands up. I don't see anybody in here coming forward. Did you have a report? So without any more, on item fourteen, we'll move on to fifteen, consent agenda action will be taken on all items, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine. May be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action and without an extensive hearing, any member of the board or any citizen may request. That an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. So commissioners.
I'd like to pull fifteen E.
E, Echo?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull fifteen H.
Fifteen H. Okay, so I have a request for fifteen E, fifteen H from the commissioners. Any requests from? Public. If not, and we're looking at fifteen A through fifteen I with pulling E and H, any motion on that?
Mr. Chair, I moved that we approved the consent agenda minus items fifteen E and fifteen H.
I have a second.
A second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Harrison, second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye. Right, pass four zero. And we will go to fifteen E. Yes, go ahead.
So the reason why I pulled this is, first of all, I wanted to ask it, we didn't get a, on eight C, we didn't get a. Presentation and does this, I don't know what fifteen E basically does and so I'd like to. Be informed a little bit about it and also I'm trying to see if it's in. Bringing something to the direction of the self-fulfilling program. And so it's kind of like, and to give you an example, it's like when we put people on a food bank. And then the next year they say there's more people on the food bank, it should be the opposite. It should be, we should be trying to get rid of those programs. It should be non-existent to be successful. And so that's where I wanted to know what this was about a little bit and know what we're doing.
Absolutely. So, um, fifteen E is a, uh, sub award through Community Chest Incorporated for us to participate. And what is known as the Resilient Eight Coalition. I don't know if I can find quickly who those eight counties are. I do know it's Story, Lyon, Churchill, Mineral. Nye, I'm missing somebody in there. Nonetheless, we have been receiving this grant for several years now. It is a federal grant from. Um, Persa and the purpose of this grant originally was to bring it together, a coalition of counties to work together. To address the opioid crisis prior to the litigation. It has such and its expansion grants continue to now work towards utilizing lower level staff to support behavioral health needs. And what we do is we come together once a month to discuss what we're doing at a low level to provide. Uh, prevention and low-level intervention services. And the forty-five thousand covers us, not even a full FTE and what they do is that helps, um, cover the cost of my data analyst. And providing the data of the information we collect as far as our universal screening for individuals with behavioral health or behavioral health indicators. Including opioid use. However, we are expanding in the resilient eight coalition to, uh, be more broad and not so focused. Absolutely not in a self-fulfilling prophecy. Uh, my department's motto is essentially that we're always trying to work ourselves out of a job. Um, we do utilize data sets that you guys heard about, like the YR BSS, uh, to write for grants. Those data sets we are reliant on, not just the YR BSS, but the other things that come from the state. Office of Analytics, because we don't have the capacity to go out and do those surveys and studies on our own. So we are reliant on that state data, um, and being able to apply that. You know, and also puts out like a health data book that just. Provides the information and that's what those studies do. They just provide the information based off of what's currently happening. If it's available at a local level, if not, we're aggregated up into either the rural balance or the state in general. And we utilize that data to help us gain additional funding to do the preventative work or the low-level intervention work.
Well, thank you. That, that, that was very informative. I appreciate it. I'd make a motion if anybody didn't have any.
Any public comment? No public comment, then we'll go to the motion.
Make, uh, I'd like to move to accept the notice of subcontract award with Community Chest Incorporated as part of the resident, resident. Resilient, saying that wrong. Eight behavioral health project in the amount of forty-five thousand with no match.
Second?
Second.
So motion by Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Four zero. And we'll move on to fifteen H for possible action, accept grant award from the Office of Public Health Infrastructure Improvement for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. In the amount of a hundred and six thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine and twenty-three cents. To develop a feasibility study regarding the creation of Health District for the Quad County Region of Nevada. It's year up again.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, the reason I wanted to pull this off is I don't think we know enough about this at this point. Yeah, I was just looking through this, the paperwork briefly at the goals and objectives and. I'm not sure that they're complete. We might, you know, based on the conversation we had during the Board of Health, I think there's a lot of questions about this. Um, including the need for. The system we have now is not broken, it is working correctly, correct?
I would not say that our current system is meeting the full needs of our residents. Uh, from the human services perspective in attempts to ensure that our full. Um, demographic is able to receive all of the preventative healthcare that they need from those services. I would say not. I would say that the state does, uh, make the best attempt possible in regards to community, um, health nursing. Uh, environmental health and epidemiology to provide those, um, services to us. I do also think that there is. Future potential for decentralization of health from the state. And with that, I think us having the best information ahead of time to identify whether health district with a. Uh, or with our existing partners, the Quad County. Or to have that information and identify that a health district of our own would be in our best interest. Um if and potentially when the state decides to decentralize public health.
Yeah, I'm I'm not in favor of them.
Any other? Anything else? Uh Commissioner Keller?
I'm in in favor, but I think we need to get the information so that we know what we're looking at. This is a feasible feasibility study that you're going to bring back before us. And kind of tell us more about both sides of the pros and cons of everything.
Yeah, it I I mean, it very well might not be in our best interest, but we will never truly know unless we go down this um. Option, go down this rabbit hole with somebody qualified to go down the rabbit hole, extrapolate all the relevant data. Um the contractor is very well-known in the public health field and did the Quad County Health Preparedness. Work previously prior to that um entity being formed. And on the scope of work, I just want to highlight as far as what the goals and objectives are. Um number one is to hold key informant interviews and you all as our Board of Commissioners are a part of that. Key informant group. Um so each of you would be engaged to ask this information. Um and identify whether or not it's um relevant to us at this point in time.
I look at your department as probably the most complicated to me. Uh I don't have that much knowledge in your department, so. It's very complicated. Man, the more information I can get, the easier it is for me to make a good decision. So I'm going to be supported in this.
Anything further? Yeah, I I look at it as if you can interview us and we're asking you questions about what this is going to do for us. I'm not quite sure how those interviews are going to go, other than gee, I hope it's better.
Well, and that is so the first um that's goal number one or objective number one. To gear where that contractor is going to look to make sure that the end result answers your questions. So um going into it, we know generally we want a feasibility study. What models could happen? What happens if just these two counties come together? What happens if all four counties come together? What happens if you choose not to? So you guys being key informants will guide that contractors. Future work and what the end outcome is going to, what questions are going to be answered fully.
Okay, Commissioner Keller.
And when we do that, I because I I could ask questions, but then I want to hear what Wes's questions are or. Or Dave's questions and combine that and then go another round because that's going to open up a whole. Bunch of questions for me. So if we can have that interactive as much as possible.
Yeah, absolutely. We could schedule it at a commission meeting to ensure that um open meeting laws, you know, engaged with.
Yeah, that way we get our thought process going a little bit more on the whole subject.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record. So um doing a feasibility study and finding out. If if it's better for Lyon County or not is helpful in multiple ways. Um you know, if the feasibility comes, study comes back and says that. You know, this isn't the road that we should go down. Having that information going into a legislative session where they may be. Um pushing for decentralization would be just as helpful. Um you know, as we form our arguments there. And so. I do want to point that out.
Thank you.
Mr. Here.
Uh Commissioner Harrison.
Um just want to make sure there's no county match on this. And this will cover all of your staff time as well.
No county match. There is indirect to cover staff time um as far as managing the contractor and then the remainder goes directly to the contractor for the word.
Uh any public comment? I'm seeing none, and I'll look for a motion. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to uh I'll move to accept the grant award from the Office of Public Health Infrastructure and Improvement. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four in the amount of. One hundred and six thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents to develop a feasibility study regarding the creation of a health. District for the Quad County Region of Nevada.
Now the second.
Oh, second it.
Okay, uh motion by Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Hendricks.
Mr. Chair, I have asked a question, clarifying question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Since the motion is for the Quad County Region, that kind of limits it. The study, are you looking at the central Nevada, does it? If 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 it's worded that way.
Well, this proposal is for this contractor to work with the quad counties and discuss a quad county region. Or identify um what different structures that looks like inclusive of those four counties. Um so a section of it could be what it would look like for just Lyon, a section of it could be what it looks like for just Carson, what it looks like for just Douglas. Or what it looks like for just Story, and then what it looks like for us as a quad county entity. It does not explore the central Nevada Health District option. Um but it does give us the information as what it would look like for Quad or for us as an individual.
See, I I think that should be part of the the study, so.
Commissioner Keller.
I also, uh to me, as part of feasibility study, the feasibility of whether or not it makes sense. So that would be a component.
Sure.
Of it, because you're weighing that. That's a weight of should we go to the central? So to me, it it definitely fits into the picture.
I can certainly go back to the contractor and ask at that point in time, her current proposal doesn't involve um investigating the central Nevada Health District. Um so that may or may not uh change the way that you choose to vote at this point.
You know, it's not going to change my my uh motion, but I I think that at least they could use that as a weight and going. Does it make sense? Because you're trying to prove this one over here or get the data of this one, so.
Okay, uh we've had comment. Got a motion and we need to vote. Uh all those in favor of item fifteen H um say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, uh motion passes three one. And we are out of the consent agenda. Item sixteen, regular agenda action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. Six uh sixteen A for possible action approved change order number two for the Aspen Creek Rapid Infiltration Basin. And twelve inch affluent main project with aims construction to extend the contract duration of the final completion date by thirty calendar days. Due to equipment delays and Mr. Burkett.
Chairman Hoffa Day, Commissioners David Burkett for the record. So this project's almost wrapped up. We have one item left and unfortunately we can't get it. So um this is a a no change cost for a a no cost change order. Um to extend it thirty days so that we can get that part and have the contractor install it within the next thirty days. We still are waiting on a confirmation of when that will be shipped. I don't have an absolute answer, so we had to make our best approximation, how long it would take. So I can't guarantee it'll be here within thirty days, but I'm confident, fairly confident that it will be. So um this was our best estimate to do a thirty-day extension.
Okay, I see Commissioner Keller with his hand on his microphone.
Just ready to to move along. I like those words, no cost.
Okay, yeah. Anybody else?
Favorite type of champ.
Yeah.
Com- comments by Commissioners, none, pu- public comment. I see nine. Okay, I'm ready for that motion.
I'll move to a move change order number two for the Aspen Creek Rapid Infiltration Basin and. Twelve inch affluent main project with Ames Construction to extend the contract duration of the final completion date by thirty calendar days. Due to equipment delays.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I I did.
Did you?
Yep.
Just want to make sure.
Okay, and I appreciate that. Uh okay, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes four zero. Thank you, Mr. Burkett. Sixteen B for possible action proved seventeen thousand five hundred from a budget transfer from contingency. To enable the purchase of scheduling software for the Sheriff's Office. Okay.
Good morning, Commander Ryan Powell for the record. Um I just wanted to provide some uh history and input on this uh agenda item. Uh this is in regards to scheduling for our staff at the Sheriff's Office. So historically, we have relied on. Uh internal schedules that we design and create ourselves. So we utilize um. Well, back in the old days, it was handwritten schedules. Uh we've since migrated to uh Microsoft Excel spreadsheet and then now Google Sheets. Uh one of the problems that we run into with this is uh. Prior to using Google Sheets, we had to be inside the county on a county computer to review schedule changes. Um so. Uh schedule changes happen frequently in our world based upon injuries, uh changes and shifts and stuff like that. And so we've constantly been trying to find a new way to do scheduling that it's advantageous to the county. And and the personnel that's utilizing the scheduled software. Uh so we started doing some research this year. And looking at what other agencies are using for their departments to schedule. And uh every everything I've uh I've found and everybody I've talked to is pointing me towards this software called the Lad Tech. So I I talked to Mr. Foley about this. He had me go out and do some homework on this, uh which I've done. I talked to three different agencies in our local area. In regards to this, and I believe that it'd be a good option for the Sheriff's Office. Uh to utilize essentially what happens is it's a software program that we utilize that will uh build schedules for us. That will have access uh via internet connection. So cell phone access, computer access, laptop, uh that type of thing. And uh it offers instant um schedule updating. So what I mean by that is if somebody calls in sick. Um I can put a a notification, like a push notification out and uh to a certain group of people and it'll automatically allow them to fill that shift. So if I have somebody calling for graveyard tonight in Mason Valley, I can send a notice out. Uh a deputy can get that, say accept, and then we'll automatically upload them to the schedule. Um and then the schedule's updated. Currently, what we're doing now is when somebody calls in sick, a supervisor's having to pull the schedule out for the entire county. Which we have different schedules based upon the area the person's assigned to. And then go down the list and make phone calls and say, are you able to come in? Yes or no? And then just work their way down. This would dramatically increase the uh the efficiency of of that process. Um it's also got an ability for us to uh to farm out our requests for special assignments. So we have fair and radio coming up. Night in the country would just be two recent examples where I can send a notification out and say, this is the shifts that I have. These are the hours. And then people can sign up for those and it's automatically added to the scheduling software. Um so it it kind of brings us into a a better technological uh platform um for scheduling. The other the other thing I do want to say is that the scheduling we're using now is contingent upon uh the user. So if I make a mistake on the schedule, um and I don't catch that mistake and I don't have anybody proofread it. Then that can have catastrophic, you know, um effects down the road. Uh so in other words, if I get somebody's days off wrong. Then the next week, that can be, that can be problematic when it comes time to do time sheets. So this software does all that. Um you tell the software what the schedules are, what the hours are, what your minimum staffing requirements are. It builds that for you and then puts that product out. So uh again, been working with Mr. Foley on this. And I think we have a good project here. I think that it would benefit the Sheriff's Office. We plan on using it for both civilian and sworn staff. Uh so dispatch, the control room operators, uh detectives, jail, all of that. So I'll be happy to take any questions.
Questions, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm all for efficiency. I'm all for it. Does this take care of the timekeeping as well?
So we're still uh we're still working through that. It there's a, there's an application that would work with you. So our time sheets uh essentially. Uh and Mr. Foley could probably comment better, but it would, it would copy what is inputted into our schedules. And then one of his staffers would be able to input uh that into our time sheets. So I think it will probably fix some of the issues that we have. Uh one of the problems we run into with our time sheets is we're a twenty-four seven operation. And so uh I have to do time sheets today. However, tonight. Um something might happen in the county where we have to call several people out to go deal with something. And then his staff's talking to me tomorrow saying, hey, uh you know, we need to get these adjustments approved so they can process payroll. So that type of stuff would be fixed. So in other words, as soon as overtime's in there, the deputy can go in and change that. Which would be uh in that record that they could then upload to units.
Anything further?
Does Josh have any thoughts?
That's a deep question.
Yeah.
Josh Foley, I got his on floor for the record. That is a deep question and I'm not going to answer that directly, but I'll talk about this topic. Uh on this topic, I I'm in full support of the the Sheriff's Office moving forward with it. It makes a lot of sense. We had the exact same discussion on can we import from that software straight into the time? The pay module on our accounting software. And so part of the cost of this is to explore that. There may be an add-on or a separate software we need to to come back to the board in the future to. To do that particular piece in addition to it, but we're going to explore that and hope that it doesn't get to that. But there will be some moving pieces. We'll have to figure out if that does work out. If not, it's still fantastic for scheduling the sheriffs. Um time and filling shifts as he's discussed with you. It's also fantastic where we can go in, even if it doesn't directly correlate into payroll. And instead of making calls to all the different deputies and sergeants and lieutenants and commanders, sometimes even sheriff. Um we can go in and see what the actual schedule was. And that answers a lot of our questions. So someone who puts in. Five hours a shift differential, but puts in eight hours of graveyard time or twelve hours. We're like, wait. Wh- what's up with this? We can double it, diagnose that straight from the uh the software.
Sweet.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, all for a motion on sixteen B.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve seventeen thousand five hundred dollars from a budget transfer from contingency. To enable the purchase of scheduling software for the Sheriff's Office.
Grab the second.
Oh, second.
Okay, uh motion by Commissioner Harrison, a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sixteen C for possible action approved the outdoor festival application for Justin and Katie Bryan. Um the Mud Fest to be held on September fourteen through seventeen twenty twenty-three at the Lyon County Fairgrounds. Year in Nevada and subject to permit conditions in the staff report. Uh Ms. Lindberg.
Stacy Lindberg, Lyon County Clerk, Treasurer for the record. Um I put together the festivals, festival submission package and you can see it was in late backup. So we were doing it a little late and it was at a no fault of anyone's other than maybe some communication issues. So I do ask for your consideration to review the the late review. Um I know um I've been working very closely with Andrew and and the parties are here to represent their event. If you had any questions on the information provided, um there was a couple of things that um. I know Andrew wanted to address in regards to this. So did you want to start with yours or?
Why don't we uh go with your presentation first?
Okay, um I I was just planning on introducing it, but um it was, it's to be held at the fairgrounds. Um it's a mud fest event with some uh music. Camping. And uh mud bogging. So and some of the concerns were that um the. Attendees were not to exceed the four hundred and ninety-nine for the mass gathering permits. They have had re uh approval from the fairgrounds in order to use the facility. Um you'll see some of the conditions that you see on some of our festival permits for public safety. Um some of the things that are they're addressing now are the um. Security, um water. And camping. Um they are using a BYOB program, so they're not having any alcohol being served there. And they are trying to limit no hard alcohol like for this beer in there. Mentioned something about having um for controlling of underage drinking there that underage parties would have wristbands. And so it'd be easily saw if there were any violations. Um one thing that we're still working with them on is the security with the Sheriff's Office. Um so I do need some input from the Sheriff's Office on that, but. Um they are here if you have any questions and they can address that as well. So we're looking for a preliminary review and approval um with the contingencies as we stated.
Questions for Ms. Lindberg? All right, so County Manager.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, before we get to the um to the applicant. I do want to request that the board add a condition of approval. Um and that is because they're holding camping on site that uh they collect the transient lodging tax. Uh six percent, so that that would be required, but we just want to make sure that that's spelled out in the. Um permit conditions. And that's only if they're charging for camping, that's all right, so.
Call again, transient.
Transient.
Lodings.
Yeah.
Okay. Other than that, um you know, as condition, um. You know, they'll have to work with the uh the Sheriff's Department and Lyon County Emergency Management. Um to make sure that all of their um safety and security plans are are their emergency plans. Um so there's still quite a few steps that'll have to be done before the permit is actually issued today. Um the board would not be actually issuing. Um, the board would not be actually issuing that permit. It would just be, um, authorizing staff in the board as, um. Uh, you know, to make sure that, uh, the rest of the conditions are met.
Questions for the county manager? No. You know, um, present, presentation here? Did you want to speak?
Hi, my name is Justin Bryan. I am with JV Productions LLC. In regards to Mud Fest Nevada. We started. This back in February. We were doing it on private property. So some of this stuff wasn't needed. Um, and then that fell through. So we were told to reach out to Yerington Fairgrounds. They were bigger and they were, you know. They had a bigger spot for us. When I reached out to the fairgrounds, we worked with Lisa and she. Very helpful, very everything you needed. We were like, what else do we need? Let's start doing this now. This is back in June, May. And I was told, hey, we'll find out what you need to do next. And we'll go from there. As time went on, we kept asking what's next, what's next? And she said that she. Wasn't, nothing came of it. She emailed in asking what we needed next. Nothing came of that. Um, and if you could tell, a lot of this stuff has been done in the last two weeks. We can ask. So we're willing to jump through any hoop we can. In the next month, less than a month now for this event to make it happen. Um. I think it'll bring a ton of money to the town. Um, who doesn't like light music? Right. We, we aren't charging for camping. It's thirty dollars a person. That's for the entire weekend. That's just to come and have a good time. We were asked to have security, which wasn't something we had thought about. We had volunteers that were being security. None of those people have guard cards. They were just people that knew. That they could, you know, hey, no underage drinking, keep it down, no fighting, no this, no that. Um, at the end of the, you know, at the end of the day, they were going to be there for the event. For the local people, make sure that everything was safe. Moving forward, we did reach out. So we don't, we reached out to a company. Uh, HMF Enterprises LLC about staff members. None of their people have guard cards or just staff people. Fairgrounds use them for the fair. Um, and these are people that'll be at the gates. They'll be at the stage. They'll be at the spectators area. They'll be walking. Looking at wristbands. We have three different wristbands that we're issuing. One will be for kids under the age of ten, which is free. So we can, that's just for us to tally how many kids showed up to this event. And then we have a wristband that says under twenty-one on it. So if any person working, whether it's my volunteers or if it's these people. They, they get a warning. Drinks poured out, you're done. Um, if they're seen again, they're, they're told to leave. Um. So we're doing everything we can to, to make something cool happen. This is, Nevada doesn't have anything, anything like this event. Um, these are practically monster trucks that are coming out. And, you know, we have. Lot of locals that are on board. Everybody in the town, everywhere we go, they're like, Mud Fest sounds amazing. Um, A and H local place, they're actually the insurance for us, which in the paperwork was incorrect. That was somebody else we've worked on. Um, but we do have the liability, everything that was asked for from Lisa at the fairgrounds. That's all made for already done. Um. You know, local people, we got, you know, the. Um. There's a little creations place that's working on banners for all of our sponsors. Uh, you know, anything and everything we possibly can to bring to the community itself is what we're working on. Um, I've done Mud Fest as a free community thing, just to bring to get people together out in North Reno. Just a big puddle of water is really all it was. Um, and that, that what we had, we had to stop doing it because it was too big, too many people. I had too many followers. My wife and I actually moved out of state a while back. And I had messages like, we need your community. We need your event to bring our community back together like this. People love this stuff, love this event. And Nevada just doesn't have anything like it. So I appreciate you guys.
Any questions? Commissioner Keller?
I was just curious about you because you, you talk more about the process and stuff and then just saying it's a big event. Do you have any idea of how many participants you're going to have? I, 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 I just, what's your spiel? What's your, what's going on on the radio?
So on the radio, we have small tire, big tire and outlaw, which is the big guys, right? Um, as far as how many participants, I, I don't know this time. We put out a form. That we asked people to fill out and say, hey, what are you bringing? And we did get some. I think we're at like ten, fifteen trucks right now for some big tire, some small tire. We have side by sides that are, you know, super tall. Um, we have some, uh, another area where we're doing the mud drags, which is even further away from spectators. Um. That alone has, since I posted on that, that alone has brought, you know, upwards of twenty, twenty-five. People that were bringing, you know, race trucks to have a good time as well. On top of that, we're doing things like mud volleyball, you know, in the pits because they're already dug and already full of water. So why not? Um, and then another thing we were doing was a. Like a tug of war in the mud with the kids and a mud run with the kids. Some of the brain, let the kids have fun too. It's not all about adults having a good time. Um, and then as far as alcohol. Our goal is to not allow it as much as we can. It's kind of hard to search every camper that comes on site. Um, so, you know, we're going to do our best to keep the peace. We don't want to, we don't want to bring a party to your guys' town. And destroy. That's nothing to do with us. We're, I've always been about a community. I don't live in Yerington, but Yerington's small and I love it. And we, we don't want anything but good things to come to Yerington. And with that, bring money to the stores and the gas stations and everything like that.
Anything further?
You've mentioned music, uh, what is that separate local bands or is that, are you bringing in somebody?
We have some local, uh, out of Reno, uh, inferno, we got spur crazy coming out, just some country bands. We have a couple of bands coming from, um, Southern California. We're like a soft rock, nothing crazy. Um, just, they're all smaller bands. The goal is to grow bigger. And as we talked to him, I go, my goal is to bring big guys. So I'm, I'm, my goal would be to have like Jelly Roll come out and bring huge more people.
Thank you. I might have more questions after. You got a couple of people on public comment, so I might have some.
All right. No other commissioner comments or public comment? Lisa Tibbles.
Now, hold on. Are you there?
Yes.
I'm right in the middle of fair. I'm in the fair office. Andrew, Josh, thank you for showing support to the fair. I love the cowboy hats. Um, I just want to say that, um, I know there was some miscommunication on this application at the very beginning. Um. Clear back in June, um. With county office. And, you know, he might not have taken the right steps, but that was a misinform to us. That we did not know anything about this festival permit. In the years that I've been on the board, I've never heard about this, but now I know. And after this is done and after fair is done, we're going to sit down with Andrew and get on board with this. So we know what we're doing on our end. I mean, I support him a hundred percent. I think he's doing everything he needs to do to make this right. Um, for you guys to approve. I think it would be a great event as far as fair board was concerned. When we approved it, we thought it would be a great thing to maybe get another event in here to Yerington on the fairgrounds. And it would be a community thing. It's not, it's not another night in the country right now. I don't think he hasn't anticipated that. I think it's just a small festival that he wants to try to get going. I don't know if you'd even call it a festival. If he has fifty people show up. Two hundred people show up. You know. That's doing him a. A good job for, um, you know, the first year. So I just asked that you really consider it for this year being the late that it is and. Um, like I said, I think he's doing everything right. I think he's trying. I've talked to him several times and I think. He's really trying to do the right thing and he wants to bring something to the fairground. So I just ask for you guys to really consider it and. You know, maybe next year it will be bigger and he'll have to do bigger things, but for right now it's. A first timer and let's give him a shot. That's all I have to say, but thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. McDonald.
Good morning. Um. Thanks for, uh, listening to, uh. Josh and we, we're really excited at the. Fairboard, uh, to have another event at the fairgrounds. We've worked hard to try to promote events out there. And so we were kind of taken back by, um. The steps and the amount of. The amount of steps that it takes to do these so-called festivals. It's like Lisa said, we've never ran across this in the past, so. Um, it was new to us and kind of surprising at the same time. But I do hope that you all will. Uh. Go ahead and approve this. I think it's going to be a great event. People are talking about it already in town and, um. It's a wonderful way to promote events and doing things at the fairgrounds. And promoting, um, Yerington and Lion County in general. Um. Bringing a different audience to the fairgrounds may actually improve, um. Our audience at the fair and rodeo itself, then they kind of don't know that we're out here and maybe don't know. Other, unless you're a night in the country fan, but you know, it's not the same audience, I don't think. And so it's exciting to think that, um, this could have some. Overlap and some overflow into the, uh, fair itself in the future. So I'm excited to have it and I hope you all will consider approving it. It was a little bit hectic. Um. Finding out there was way more steps to this application that we had anticipated or even imagined. So, um, it seems very cumbersome for an event that's not. Like a night in the country event. Um. So I hope you will consider it. We're super excited to have it and we thank you for your, um, your time.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Keller, you have more?
Can I say something?
Oh, Commissioner Hendricks.
My only concern is the wristbands, um, having wristbands for under twenty-one. Any kid can just pull that off. It seems like it would be better to have wristbands on people that are twenty-one and older.
Yeah, and we, we plan on having. We have it for. Twenty-one and older, a regular wristband for the event. And then I have. Purchased already, uh, wristbands that say under twenty-one as well. And then there's a cheap little green one. It's just for us to keep track of like kind of children are coming. Just so we can maybe work towards next year of having more for the kids.
Nothing. Okay. Yeah, I'm too. Just, uh, public comment. You had that? Oh, yes. Go ahead.
I, like I said, I, I was putting this package together, but just to clarify. Um, this festival permit is, is not new and the reason why that we really have started enforcing this and working with Andrew to get this done. Is it is within county code that we are requiring these. Um, and it's for public safety and to keep, keep all of our events family friendly and safe. So I didn't want, did want to clarify that to you. It wasn't that we were trying to, to make it hard. And like I said, I spoke to you in the hall and we're, we're trying to do everything we can to get this event together for you. But we do have to keep our, our, our county and, and our citizens safe and, and do these things correctly. So that, I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Looking for the motion.
Mr. Chair.
Oh.
I will move, I put my glasses. I will move that we approve the outdoor festival application for mud bog, music and camping festival. Subject to the permit conditions one through seventeen, adding condition eighteen that if. Uh, there's a charge for camping, then the trans, transient lodging, lodging tax must be. Um, collected and condition number nineteen. That the property must be cleared, cleaned and left as the way it was received.
If I have a second?
Little second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Harrison, second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Have a nice festival.
Do you have a card?
Don't have to cry out a flyer.
Okay. That'll work.
Yeah. Okay, we'll move on to sixteen D. Thank you for the presentation. For possible action, direct the county manager to add to the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five tentative budget for one-time funding. For the National Center for Public Lands Counties in the amount of forty-one thousand, two hundred and five dollars and forty-nine cents. Uh, this is brought from the last agenda and moving it to the next fiscal year. And county manager, go ahead.
Oh, um, Andrew Haskin, I don't really have any, anything further to add. This was a, an agenda item request by Commissioner Henderson. Um, I, I can, I'm happy to summarize it again if, uh, if the board would like, but.
Any thing, commissioners, go ahead. Anderson.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, I thank you for putting us on the agenda. I did ask for it. Um, I just want to make it clear that everybody understands that even though we approved this item today. That does not mean that we are, are giving the final go-ahead to the, for us to contribute to the National Center for Public Lands Councils. That we will do in April when we do the budget. We need to keep it in and we take it out, but I was. Wanted to, wanted to do this so we have it in there so that the county manager can play in accordingly.
Commissioner Keller.
I'm ready to move, make a motion or?
Any public comment? If not, then I'm ready for the motion.
Okay, I move to. Direct the county manager to add to the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five tentative budget for one-time funding. For the National Center for Public Lands Counties in the amount of forty-one thousand, two hundred and five dollars and forty-nine cents. Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero.
Thank you all.
Uh, sixteen E for possible action, approve a grant agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration. If the A in the amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars for Silver Springs Airport to rehabilitate runway zero six twenty-four. And. Taxiway A. Do allow the county manager to sign. Okay, any? Thing from the county manager today?
Um, Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager. So yeah, this is a three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar, uh, nine hundred. Nine hundred and eleven dollar grants, um, for a pavement rehabilitation project at the Silver Springs Airport. Usually there's a match for these grants. However, this year there is not. So, um, I want to take advantage of that. And so. The reason it, it is asking for me to, uh, to sign it is because they sent it to me in a docu-sign.
Commissioner comments? No?
No.
Public comments? Who would object to getting money from the, uh, FAA?
Right.
Uh, motion?
With the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars. For the Silver Springs Airport to rehabilitate runway oh six slash twenty-four and taxiway, taxiway A. And to allow the county manager to sign necessary documents.
Try the second.
Sure.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Harrison, second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Okay. But we are through with the, yeah, that part of the agenda. Seventeen, future agenda requests.
Not at this time.
Quest.
Don't.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like an, an item to, um, look at the. Natural Resources, um, committee. It's listed on every planning commission agenda. But they never do anything. And so I, I want us to, to, to take a look at that. And maybe actually separate that from the planning commission because that might not be the, the skill set. Of the people that we want on the natural resources committee. So I, I would like that for the future agenda.
Just going to say you have my list. We'll eventually get them in. We'll eventually get it all into the agenda.
So.
Hey.
A question.
Oh, question, go ahead.
Yeah, I've already reached out to staff on that particular thing, uh, and so is there, you're not hurrying that along. You just want to. Because I, 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 I'm supportive of that, but I, I want to make sure staff isn't on a deadline. Yeah, I, I, I said, yeah, in the future, I didn't say I'd be like. But yeah, we need to take a look at that process. Certainly.
And let's go to item eighteen, commissioner comments. Commissioner Hendricks.
Yeah, I, I did want to thank, um, Andrew and Dustin. Um, I sent him some pictures about the. Trees and weeds in the right away in the town portion of Silver Springs and they got crews right out there and cut it all down. You can see the stop signs again and. It's good for our area and I just wanted to say thank you. It's good for our area and I just wanted to say thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
I've said enough.
Commissioner Keller comments?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that uh the collect the transient lodging tax in the applications. Can that just be part of the application process going forward? So we never have to put that in. To collect that uh lodging tax on the applications. Shouldn't that just be in the application? And if we could get the no cost or no match as part of policy, that'd be great.
Uh, just a couple of comments here. Uh, I mentioned earlier, we have a lot of very tall weeds that are gonna become very tall. Burning parts of the community if we don't get them cleaned up. Um, I know that the road crew's been out knocking things down. But everybody should take interest in making sure we don't have significant. Fuels for fire when that part of the season rolls around and everything dies out. Um, the small businesses, uh, we had a news release on low-interest loans. I think, I'm not sure if we got the paperwork. Posted anywhere for. Uh, businesses that lost anything during our emergency declarations as well as homeowners and. Um. People that had any losses with their homes or any losses around their property. Uh, we also have the community flu vaccine events that are, it's that time of year when uh those who are gonna get flu shots need to get, get them. And the Fall Festival for Craft Fair on the September twenty-third, one to seven at Mountain View Park. So those are a few things that are coming up in the the festival and uh craft fair will be. Mentioned a couple more times that we get plenty of participation. Um. Nineteen, going into our final public participation, no action be taken on any item until this properly agendas. It's anticipated the public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to it in time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak, train public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. Board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item, but before the board takes any action. So final public comment, do we have anybody? So. Line up at the wall.
Mr. Chantay Lassard for the record. Um, along the lines of the weed control, I don't know who owns the old golf course in Yerington. But last weekend when I went there, the weeds are taller than, you know, I was when I was blocking my dogs. So I think that that's gonna be a problem area, but I don't know whose responsibility it is, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the input. I'll write it down here and we'll discuss it with uh County Manager. Any further public comment? I don't see anything on Zoom and I don't see anybody lined up. So do we have a closed session today?
No, not today.
Nothing? Then uh I will adjourn the meeting at eleven thirty-three.